There's not a whole lot of people looking for jobs. And there's a whole lot of employers.
We see it coming.
People coming in or leaving.
All building materials so high, we got a lot of building, all that's taxable.
Those people that are very proactive.
People have it. It's been bad. It's all kind of, if it short lived, we're operating this year going, yes. But if it, if it goes on for a while, then prices will, will come back down. We'll stay up. We, you know, then, then we get inflation. So it's not, we're, we're not going to know probably until close to the end of the year. It is what it is. I think as long as it's, as long as that really rolls in now, it'll be.
How you doing?
How you doing?
She's here.
I'm saying hi.
You've had a little.
I hope it'll be a short meeting.
Hi, hi.
Happy Father's Day.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Happy Father's Day to you, Steve and anybody out there who's five.
I have people like the mother today, too.
Nothing mother should celebrate every day.
Good, so we don't need a Mother's Day as much as we usually do.
We need a bonus, bonus.
I'm not going, I'm not touching that.
Well, I know, you're a good guy. Watch your back, buddy.
What did you think was so far? Bob? Bob, before we get started, you've got, uh, that you want to talk about Crystal Hill. Are you wanting to talk about that when we get to the resolution on it or just during public comment?
No, just when you get to the resolution, I have some things to offer to be beneficial.
Is it $152,000?
Well, it's close.
Okay. Then we're getting close.
Obviously, Pacific member. How you doing? How you doing, Bob? Good to see you.
Good to see you, bud.
I don't know. I'm going to have a little attitude today. I don't know.
I agree. I think so.
So I'll be in hybrid.
My parents live all the way. I've been, I've been completely out of.
Have you shown them a bit, huh?
Yes, yes. Six days. Seven people, one house.
Wow.
Yeah. 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 Did I, did I miss your notice to me?
That's hilarious.
I'm like, no, nope. Never say you. It's what he, what he wanted to do now.
How long, how long you remain?
It would have been like six days.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. And then.
Anything that passes, it could be either.
Yeah. It's a big one.
Yes.
Three, two. All right, I'm going to go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the City Council for June 21st, 2021. I've received notice from three council members, Shin, Gardner, and Saunders, that they would not be able to make it, uh, tonight. So we do have a quorum with, uh, five council members present. Uh, with that, we will move on to invocation and pledge of allegiance, which, uh, the city attorney will be leading us in.
Let's pray. Dear God, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you for the freedom that you give us and for the responsibility that you give us to conduct the city's business, Lord. We pray that we would do that in a way that honors you and that, um, is in the best interest of all the citizens of Mammell. We pray that you will watch over our first responders and our military and give them your hedge of protection, Lord. We pray that you will, um, just continue to, to bless them in everything that they do. And we thank you for just the kindness that they show people on a regular basis, Lord, um, and for, um, just the spirit of, of working together. We thank you for all of our team members here in Mammell, those who work on our streets and in sanitation and, um, all of, all of those that, without which our life would not be the same. And we just, um, thank you for them and we pray that you will watch over all of our city employees and help us to treat them in a way that, that honors you as well, Lord. And we ask all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on your God and with his love. But if there were any others, Lord.
All right, the next order of business is special guests and announcements. Uh, and I am proud to announce the employee of the year for 2020 to be somebody who many of y'all know, uh, and that would be Scott Grummer. Scott, come on down.
Is that the month or the year?
What'd I say? Uh, employee of the year? I'm sorry. Did I, did I say that wrong? Oh, you get a whole 12 months to your name. Yes, absolutely. Uh, so, uh, did I not tell you that properly? Uh, I called Scott at home, uh, randomly at two o'clock, I think, noon, somewhere around there. I said, are you going to be at the council meeting tonight? He said, yeah. Why? And I said, well, because you're employee of the, apparently I said month, but, uh, employee of the month, come on, you, you got to be there. And he goes, oh, why? And I just hung up and left it. So it's pretty good. But hey, I want to read this proclamation. Uh, this is a proclamation naming Scott Grummer as the mayor's employee of the year for 2020 and declaring June 25th, 2021 to be Scott Grummer Day in the city of Mammell. Whereas Scott Grummer began his employment with the city as staff attorney, staff assistant to the mayor in January 2019. Due in large part to his passion, dedicated, dedication, knowledge, and leadership, Scott's position was upgraded to chief of staff at the start of 2020. Whereas, as chief of staff, Mr. Grummer served as a close advisor to the mayor and had a hand in virtually every aspect of the city, including the adaptive traffic signal system, the North Mammell Smaller Area Plan, and much, much more. Whereas, while still performing his duties as chief of staff, Mr. Grummer also took on the duties of director of planning and zoning in February of 2020, where he played a pivotal role in what would become the merger of planning and zoning with the Department of Code Enforcement, Building, and Permits to create what we now know as the Department of Planning and Permits. And whereas in August 2020, Mr. Grummer was appointed to fill the role of director of planning and permits, where he has overseen an internal restructuring designed to improve strategic progress and planning, create efficiencies, and enhance interdepartmental communications. Now therefore, I, Caleb Norris, Mayor of Mammell, on this 21st day of June 2021, with great honor and privilege, do hereby declare Scott Grummer to be the mayor's employee for the year for 2020 and hereby proclaim June 25th, 2021 as Scott Grummer Day in the city of Mammell. So please join me with another round of applause.
Snap a few pictures here. Here, there you go.
Awesome. Scott, do you want to talk to us for 20 or 30 minutes?
No.
The difficulty in writing that, uh, for Scott was actually trying to condense it down to just a one-page proclamation. Um, uh, we've been very fortunate to have Scott here and congratulations, et cetera, et cetera. We'll move on to approval of the minutes for June 7th, regular meeting. Y'all have received a copy of that in your council packet. Uh, if there's no discussion, I entertain a motion to adopt the minutes.
So moved.
I've got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. With that, um, we have public comment. I've received one public comment card. We will address that when we get to the agenda item that it is on. So we will move on to the financial statement review. Liz Mathis, come on down.
And Ms. Timmons, I'm not sure if I sent you the wrong slides, but that's April's and we're going to talk about May. So it's okay, you can follow along with me in, in the financial report. I'll just refer to page numbers instead and we'll look at it that way. Okay. So we are now looking at May, uh, financials as of the end of May of 2021. Um, I left a little note up on the top, um, about our year-end accruals. Um, so for some of our revenues, particularly our millage and, and tax revenues, I have not done year-over-year comparisons, uh, because until I finish those 2020 year-end adjustments, um, it looks way off. Um, it looks like we're way over last year and we won't be quite as much, um, when we get those adjustments done. So hopefully by the time we look at June financials, I'll have had a little bit of time to, to get those adjustments made and we'll have better comparisons year-over-year. So looking at our county millage tax, um, you've heard me talk about for a couple of months now that our big payment comes in May and it has. So our current year-to-date, um, but even with that, our current year-to-date is $397,000 ahead of budget year-to-date. Um, and, um, that, that large receipt came in May. Um, we'll get another big one in kind of October, November-ish timeframe. Um, and then they'll be small in between then. Our franchise fees, current year-to-date is $3,000 ahead of budget year-to-date. State turnback funds, uh, current year-to-date is still $43,000 behind budget year-to-date. Uh, still hoping to see those increased distributions from the state, um, in the next couple of months. County sales tax, current year-to-date is $405,000 ahead of a budget year-to-date. Uh, this reflects amount, amounts for taxes collected on sales in March and that were collected by the state in April. Our city sales tax, uh, current year-to-date is $169,000 behind budget, uh, year-to-date. This represents taxes collected, again, uh, on sales in March, collected by the state in April. And someone, um, asked me a question when we first, when I first put these reports out, you know, our city sales tax is down, but our county's way up, you know, kind of what's going on there? Um, and that reflects that our sales, especially now that we're moving out of COVID quite as much, um, we're not seeing as much of our sales tax revenue actually inside the city limits, um, but it's still happening within the county, which is great. So. Our police department, current year-to-date is $101,000 behind budget year-to-date and $27,000 more than the prior year. Uh, those LOPF funds will be here till first of July, um, and so we'll look like we're under budget until that time. Uh, timing of quarterly 911, uh, dispatch funds will also have a similar effect and we'll see, uh, uh, I just got an email notification today of that distribution for the second quarter. So, um, they kind of swing quarterly. Fire department, current year-to-date is $54,000 behind budget year-to-date, $16,000 more than the prior year. And again, we'll see LOPF turnback funds in July, which will make their budget not look behind budget year-to-date, or their revenues not look like they're behind budget year-to-date. Parks, current year-to-date is $53,000 behind budget year-to-date, $36,000 more than the prior year. They're continuing, you know, of course, to monitor those revenues and maintain their expenses accordingly. The expenses are currently under budget, about $147,000. Senior Wellness Center, current year-to-date is $29,000 behind budget year-to-date, uh, $24,000 less than the prior year. Um, they're, they're still watching and I know Nicole has mentioned several times that, um, they're really working on trying to, um, encourage their members to come back to the senior center and it seems like from what she said, every week, they're starting to see more and more people back, which is fantastic. Uh, their expenses are, are currently $26,000 under budget year-to-date. Mislanious income, um, our largest budget item is that, that transfer from the capital improvement fund that we will record when that fire truck arrives. Uh, so it's going to continue to look like we're way under budget on that revenue line as well until we make that transfer. On our expense side, expenditures in all departments, uh, except planning or permits remain at or below budget year-to-date. Uh, the planning and permits is, um, showing over budget year-to-date due to some annual software costs, um, that were just paid earlier in the year. They won't end up over budget for the year as the year goes on, that'll correct. Overall, our expenses in the general fund are $384,000 under budget year-to-date and $129,000 less than the previous year. Our general fund balance, so at the end of May, the fund balance is now $9,000 under the required minimum balance. Um, so that's a pretty good swing from our eight hundred and somewhat thousand dollars we were talking about a few weeks ago. Uh, the change in this balance, though, is largely due to our current year, um, results. Our revenues currently are $774,000 more than our expenses for 2021. Um, so we've still got reconciliation work to complete, um, over the next couple of weeks, so, and I'll say weeks, it may be a month or two, um, to finish up 20's reconciliations, um, at which point then we'll have a much better picture of where we really stood at the end of 2020 on that fund balance, um, and we'll just have to address from there. Taking a look at our street fund, uh, the county millage tax is now $122,000 ahead of budget year-to-date. They got a, a nice, uh, large payment there in April as well. And state turnback funds, current year-to-date is $50,000 ahead of their budget year-to-date. Both the streets and senior services, transportation departments are under budget year-to-date on expenses and the current available street fund balance at the end of May was right at 4.8 million. In our sanitation fund, uh, sanitation fees, current year-to-date is around $6,000 ahead of budget year-to-date. Uh, we are starting to, I, I spoke to the, um, finance director with Central Arkansas Water. They are, um, last year we had stopped, they had stopped doing shut-offs for, for water and sanitation and they finally, towards the end of COVID, started back and then we had our snowstorm and they stopped again. And now they're kind of coming back up, um, and so they are starting those shut-offs. They're also starting to do some bad debt write-offs and so you'll see some of those showing up on our financial reports in the next couple of months, um, as they have some of those debt write-offs coming through. But their current operating expenses are $55,000 under budget and $15,000 less than the prior year. And their personnel expenses are $47,000 under budget year-to-date and $46,000 more than the previous year. Uh, current available sanitation fund balance at the end of May is 1.9 million. That police and fire fund, those transfers are happening monthly now. The current year receipts are $62,000 ahead of budget year-to-date, so that's the tax receipts there. Um, and then our FEMA grant, um, is just hanging out there. We're, we've done a little bit of spending this year and we'll continue to work on that project, um, cautiously for now, I think, um, knowing where we're at with our general fund. And that's where we stand at the end of May.
Thank you. Council member Mosley?
Uh, yeah, I've got several questions. You mentioned, uh, adjustments. Were there any adjustments for prior years this month?
Yes, because I'm still working through those reconciliations and so.
Okay. How many, how, what did they total this time that hit, that hit the May financials?
I, I don't know because I'm doing little ones here and there for each month's reconciliation that I'm working through. Um, so I haven't been keeping up with it as a whole.
Now, okay, now last month, uh, for the April financials, we had a big slug of adjustments there that totaled about 600,000 of, was, what years were those for?
Those were mostly in 19.
19?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and, and I'm wrapping up, um, with one last account in 2019 right now that I'm working on and I'm working with the, the auditors. So if the auditors come back with anything that they let us know that maybe we missed something and need to make an adjustment. But then we're also, so I'm working on one account in 19, but I've also got staff working on 20. So that's why I'm saying there's, there's adjustments being made wherever we need to to get those accounts reconciled.
Okay. When, like that, that amount that hit last month and in April, do you have, do you have a, some, some journal entries you made to, to make that adjustment to cash and some support for that?
Quite a few, yes.
Okay. Can, can I see that sometime or, or get a copy of it? I don't know if we're looking at pages and pages or.
Oh, you're, I'm, I'm talking stacks of stuff. And it was as we went to reconcile, like our accounts payable account at year-end, to look at what bills were outstanding at the end of the year and things like that and then reconciling the checking account.
Okay. Now, now did those adjustments, did they, by any chance, did it change the expenses for that year for 19 to where, you know, we were looking and watching to see if we're in budget for 19? Did it change any of those expense items to where maybe we exceeded the budgeted amount?
I haven't gone back to look at budget. Um, they probably did hit expense because even, even if it wasn't from 19, when you get, I got to the end of 19 and I had to reconcile that balance. If there was more or less in a liability account than what was supposed to be in there, we had to adjust it to get it to the correct amount or more or less in a cash account that was what's supposed to be in there. So the only way to get your balance sheet back in is to go through your profit and loss. You have to record it as either income or expense to get it back in balance. And so, yes, we made adjustments. Were they all adjustments from 19? I don't know. I, I know what the starting balance I had on the books was and I know what it was supposed to be at the end of the year. And if that didn't match, we had to get there. And so sometimes your, have to get there involves recording a miscellaneous revenue or if you know exactly what it is, recording that additional revenue and then sometimes it was recording an expense.
Okay, so first.
So as we finish the reports, we will go back and look at that, the expenses to budget. That is part of the, the comprehensive annual financial report does have those budget numbers on there as well.
Okay. So if we, if we exceeded a budget amount, we probably need to do budget resolutions or something like that, uh, or, or, or how do you, how do you fix something that's that old?
I don't believe we would be, I mean, you might see a line or two that was over, but the, the net of the department probably wasn't over budget.
Okay.
So I don't know that going back retroactively two years and doing a, a budget amendment to, to fix one account line, and you probably won't see that on the financial reports anyways on the, the audited financials, they'll be lumped into departmental expenses.
Okay. Okay. Uh, boy, you've had a rough go. Uh, on the, on the current May, uh, income and expense statement here, we've got a couple of expense items that have revised budget, uh, amounts. I don't remember doing, have we done any budget resolutions at all?
We have not. The, the revised amounts, um, in any of these lines were from items that were on purchase order at the end of 2019. And so we rolled the purchase order over and when you roll the purchase order over, you roll the budget dollar amount attached to that remaining purchase order over into the current year.
Okay, we don't need to do a budget resolution to, to account for that or give approval? Okay.
Because it was appropriated in 19 and it was committed in 19 on a purchase, or, excuse me, 20. It was appropriated in 20 and it was basically committed in 20 by, by that purchase order. It was issued and outstanding at the end of the year. So it's just, it's just a timing thing, but the appropriate, the original appropriation stands.
All right.
So this was, uh, that's a good question. So if the money's appropriated and committed, not I've decided that I'm going to spend it, but we've entered into a contract or we've made the purchase and you're waiting for the, uh, item to come in is where it can carry over. Um, and then, and then going back and adjusting the budget, the, so that we have an adjusted budget amount is something that I don't think we were doing previously in years past. And so we weren't adjusting that amount, uh, which is part of the problem is when it came time to look at the budget at the end of the year, nothing, uh, you know, your, your reserve fund didn't necessarily match, you know, your revenues minus expenses and then how that affected the general fund. So going back and adjusting that budget ongoing will help with the ability to have a good understanding of what's actually going in and out and sort of reconcile those two together.
The, the sanitation one is probably one of the better examples of how this works really, really well. If you look at page nine of your financial statement, at the capital expenditure line, you'll see we had an original 2021 budget of $290,000, which was for a sanitation truck. And then you see a 2021 budget revised of now to 580, which is double the amount. Well, that's because the truck that we ordered last year, that was appropriated last year, hadn't come in yet. In fact, it just recently got here. And so we've now, so the one that you see recorded as an actual year-to-date expense is the truck we ordered last year, but we needed the appropriation for this year to put the next one on order. So that's how you have the budget in. And that was probably one of the clearest lines because that's the only thing on that line is that, that truck. So, um, you can see it really well there that.
Yeah, okay.
It kind of rolls with you and so then you still have, otherwise we would look at that and go, oh, we don't have a budget to, to authorize, but, you know, putting another truck on order this year. Because it would have zeroed out when we paid for the one that we ordered last year.
All right, thanks. I'll, I'll yield to anybody else that's got a question and I'll, I may have another one or two. Thanks.
Thank you. I believe that may have been also one of the issues that you contacted legislative audit over or was that just GFOA? Because I remember I had a lot of questions about this previously and then I, those questions carried over to you.
Well, I, I talked to some of the other finance directors throughout the state of Arkansas to ask, you know, how, how does this work? I think I talked to the municipal league about it as well, um, if I think, I'm not sure that's what I talked to Lego Audit about.
Okay.
Um, but what I, the other thing that came out of all of that was, um, the need for some of those special revenue funds, which has cleared up a lot of the other issues around where we were not sure if we needed to do a, a budget amendment or things like that. And when you create those special revenue funds, the funding source becomes the authorizing for a grant, for example. And so we don't have to do a budget amendment every time we have a grant for a very specific item because it'll happen in the grant fund.
Okay. Anybody else have a question?
Uh, was there anything else, Councilmember Mosley?
I was going to ask, uh, the city attorney.
I was going to ask the city attorney, what, what is it, when we accept the financials and we had vote to accept the financials, what, what does that mean? What are we, what are we committing to? Are we saying, we, we think these are accurate or what are we, what are we doing when we accept these? And do we need to do that?
I think you're, so there is an ordinance that requires that a monthly report be given to the council on the financial status of the city. I think you're just basically accepting that the report was given and you didn't send it back for, um, some sort of work or changes or something along those lines. You're just acknowledging that it was given and I, I would assume that if you believed anything to be wrong with it, you would send it back and, and for additional work as opposed to accepting it.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Thank you. I'm done.
We used to approve the financials and I think we talked about that a few years ago. Uh, and, uh, I recall doing research and approval wasn't necessary, but it's some sort of acceptance and a formal thing saying, we have now received the, the obligations by ordinance is where we ended up. So I'll, I will always ask for, uh, the council to accept the financials and not approve them. But with that, I'll go ahead and accept, or entertain to accept the financials.
Avowed.
I've got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. With that, uh, we'll move on to procedural motion. I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only.
Avowed. Second.
I've got a motion second. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. We have no unfinished business. We do have a little bit of, um, new business. So the first item of new business is Resolution 2021 dash 12, approving a preliminary development plan, Madam City Clerk, Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2021 dash 12, approving the preliminary development plan for Country Club of Arkansas, Phase 24C.
Thank you. Uh, and so this is the preliminary development plan for, uh, Country Club of Arkansas, 24C. It was approved at the Planning Commission, uh, last. It was approved at the Planning Commission last month. We do have the applicant and planning and zoning here. If there are any questions, comments, or discussion? Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, I had one question here. I had talked to the city attorney. As far as, it's not in our packet, but it was in the planning packet, a proposed, a proposed bill of assurance. And in the bill of assurance, it talks about a property owners association and things like that. And I would like to ask, what is one going to be necessary for? Are there going to be common properties and things like that? And is this, and is this the final bill of assurance? Or is this just one until we get to the final, what do you call it, final plat?
I believe they just have to submit a preliminary bill of assurance. Madam City Attorney?
You might want the applicant to address whether this is what they consider to be their final bill of assurance. But yes, they don't have to file their final bill of assurance with it until it's ready for final plat.
Okay.
And that's in accordance with our code sections. That's what's required. A preliminary plat, they're just supposed to provide basically a draft or the bill of assurance in preliminary form.
Okay, okay. Could I ask the applicant about that?
Certainly, if the applicant's willing to answer it. If you could please state your name and address for the record, sir?
John Wright, Number One Country Club Circle. Yeah, the bill of assurance normally would go in as close as we think, you know, like the square footage requirements may change slightly, but I doubt it.
Okay.
You know, because in this particular case, there's going to be a few lots that are going to be less than the, than the big lots. You know, hundred-foot lots down there. So, they're going to be like 2,500 minimum.
Okay.
But there's some smaller lots that will probably make 2,000 or something.
Now, is there going to be like walking trails that will need to be maintained by a POA?
Yeah, we'll have our own POA.
Okay.
You know, we've got it in 25, 25, no, it's 24A and B. We already have a POA.
Okay. Is it similar to the language in here? What I was worried about was it was talking about, you know, everybody's yards need to be clutter-free and no weeds more than six inches. And it mentions, I think it gives the power to the POA to enforce that. And they would have the ability to go on somebody's property and clean it up and then bill them for it. Is that something you'd put in the final POA? And it seems like some pretty tough stuff there for folks that might want to know about that before they buy a lot. Is, what do you think? Is that something that's been in other bill of assurances in this area?
I really don't recall whether we had it in other ones or not.
All right. Well, that's the only, that's the only thing that gave me any pause. I thought, oh, my goodness.
Well, the city's got an ordinance about the hot grass anyway in there. They'll be the first one to.
It would seem like that would be the city's bailiwick. I'd hate to authorize other neighbors to come on other neighbors' lots. Just opens it up to some interesting situations, I think. So, if you could leave that out, I'd certainly appreciate it. But I don't know if it's up to us.
But, you know, there's an instance now that a builder sold a lot to an individual and I was fixing to find out who it is, because it needs their grass mowed on an empty lot. And so, I think that might affect it. So, we might need that six-inch requirement.
All right. Well, we'll visit about it again later. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion on the matter? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-12. I've got a motion and second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries and Resolution 2021-12 is approved. Next order of business is Ordinance 1035, Accepting Dedication of Streets and Drainage. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, Ordinance Number 1035, an ordinance accepting and confirming the dedication of certain streets and drainage and the preliminary plat for the development known as Country Club of Arkansas Phase 24C upon the fulfillment of certain contingencies and for other purposes.
All right. This is the standard ordinance that we've been using to accept streets and drainage in these areas. This is for Country Club of Arkansas 24C that we just approved the preliminary development plan on. It is on first reading. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, it'll be on second reading at the next city council meeting. All right. Next order of business is Resolution 2021-15, stating the position of the city regarding relocating utilities. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas. A resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2021-15, stating the position of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Arkansas, regarding Entergy Arkansas LLC's obligation to relocate utility equipment and facilities in order to facilitate improvements required for public street, city street projects pursuant to the franchise agreement first adopted in ordinance number 17.
All right, thank you. I do have a public comment card that we'll get to really quickly. Let me just give you an overview of what this is, in case it wasn't clear from the resolution itself. So, y'all know that we've been basically reconstructing Crystal Hill. The project is almost completely at a standstill at this point in time as there is, as we're awaiting utilities to be moved. The only remaining utilities that I'm aware of that have not moved at their own expense, the utilities in the right-of-way is Entergy. I believe there's some disagreement between us and Entergy over who's financially required to move that. And I'll let the city attorney briefly explain it if you have anything to add.
I think that's a good overview. There have been extensive discussions between myself and two different attorneys for Entergy regarding their obligations under our franchise agreement, which I know you guys are familiar with. So, the franchise agreement is sort of like a rental agreement, I guess. They are allowed to use our city rights-of-way for their facilities and equipment. And in return, we're paid franchise fees, which are authorized by state statute and are set at a particular level. Included in that franchise agreement are some obligations to not interfere with our transportation routes, our streets and traffic. However, there is some, case law in Arkansas is a little bit different than it is in some states as far as those obligations and who needs to pay for relocation. Particularly, it may differ depending on how long the utilities have been in that location versus how long the cities had that dedicated right-of-way or the county had the right-of-way before, before or after the utilities were already in place. Those more recent cases, I believe, are distinguishable from our situation in that we do have a franchise agreement. And the most recent one did not, it was a situation where they didn't have a franchise agreement. So, I believe that's distinguishable. Entergy has taken the position that it's not, although they really have not given us a lot of detail as to why they believe they should not have to relocate those facilities. So, I can't give a great deal of detail about why they've taken the position that they have. And then I do understand there are some cases out there that they believe may establish some sort of property right that requires them to not have to relocate at their own expense. So, that's just kind of an overview. The purpose of this resolution is to, for the city council to take a position that we believe our franchise agreement requires that they relocate their facilities at their expense as far as this is a public transportation project. It's just a, you know, it's a public street. There's not any kind of private development that's involved that we're asking them to help pay for or anything like that. Also, there are a couple of code provisions that give the city authority to regulate utilities that have a franchise within the city. This resolution is made with that as the authority behind it. And then there's a statute that gives authority for a utility to be prosecuted if they do not provide utilities in compliance with the franchise agreement that they have. And there are financial penalties for not providing those services in a manner that's consistent with the franchise agreement. So, this gives leeway to pursue that, those penalties under that statute as well.
Thank you. And I do have a public comment form from Mr. Bob Osborne. Come on down. If you could please state your name and address for the record, sir?
Yes, sir. My name is Bob Osborne and I am fortunate enough, and I'm using that word real loosely right now, to own the property on both sides of Crystal Hill Road. I have developed the part in North Little Rock and enjoy owning the part in Mammell. Right now, it's not anything to brag about. I don't know how many of you have been down there, but it's not really a street. It's just a hole between two pieces of property and I own the property on both sides. So, I have a couple of suggestions for the mayor and for you two. Maybe the engineering firm that drew the plans for the street forgot and left that electrical problem off of their plans. So, maybe their insurance company could be contacted for some relief. If not, there is a city park that's 200 yards down that road. That city park is a profit center. They lease their place out for weddings, special events. Maybe some of the money from that could be used. And these are just ideas. I have given the road one quarter of a mile to add the width for the street and the bicycle path, and I'm glad to do that. Now, I'm going to offer the mayor, I know the utility companies always pay for rights-of-way for their poles and their lines. I'm going to give you that right to use that in any negotiation you have to the power company. Just say how much you're going to give. Deduct that from the 150,000. And the reason I said I was almost there, I have a lot of confidence in you and your ability to negotiate that. So, I don't know what else I can do to help do that. I've given the land. Now, I'm going to give the right-of-way for the utility company. And if there's anything else that you think I might could do, please let me know.
If you have 142,500 bucks, that'll get there. Thank you, Mr. Osborne.
You're welcome.
We, and thank you also for donating to the city the rights-of-way and easements, utility easements that you did to help move this project along without additional expense to the city. So, I'll open up the floor if there's any discussion. Councilmember Mosley?
Do they want money? Is that what they're wanting? 142,000?
Yeah, 142,453 dollars is the amount remaining. I've spoken with Mr. Johnson. Their price was higher. I think they found a way to pay for some to reduce it down. I believe the original estimate was, I don't have the numbers close to hand, but it was somewhere around 200,000. But the amount that they're wanting to pass on to the city is that 142,000. We, as you all remember, even though we downgraded the road and made it so that it wasn't as wide, just due to the fact that this bond issuance and it was budgeted for back in 2012, and costs have risen over a decade, we didn't, we don't have much room to play with in the project. It doesn't make sense to value engineer down the project simply because the costs of engineering are going to be a portion of that amount of money. We do have a way, we can do some simple value engineering, and that's just cutting back on some of the aesthetic improvements that we had there. You know, there was, there was an idea for some trees and some city beautification, some river rock being installed along there. So, I don't know that the project dies if the city has to pay this, but it's certainly not going to be, you know, everything we'd kind of hoped for it to be. And we're just sort of in a weird limbo place at this time.
Where is the, where is their location that they would have to move? Is it down closer to Mr. Osborne's area or is it on?
It is, oh, I don't have the exact number. It's, I mean, it's a substantial number of poles. It's basically the bulk of the poles that run from, I think it's about Park on the River past Counts Massey and some up Counts Massey. If you were to drive down there, you can see which poles are in what will be the right-of-way, you know, where the road will be pretty, I mean, it's pretty visual. And then it's especially visual if you turn on to Counts Massey, where we've done some of the grading already and the poles are pretty apparent. It's a number of poles. It's not just one or two. It's 20, I think, 27? It's a good number of poles, no?
Well, I agree with what you're trying to do. I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion on this issue? Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Have you just said your name and address for the record, sir?
Michael Johnson, 108 Ponca Drive. I'm also the customer service manager for Entergy. To the mayor, madam attorney, council members, secretary, I'm sorry, clerk, and to the rest of you. 26 poles, three underground dips, okay? That's exactly what the number is. Mayor is correct. We started north of $200,000. Entergy has taken a look. We've massaged a few things here, massaged a few things there. We've got it as low as we can get it, okay? At this point, I do know that their attorney was discussing this issue with our attorney today. And I'm here as a show of support, number one for the city. I'm a resident here as well. I kind of want to know what's going on, but I also have a lot more detail as to what's going on with regard to the pricing and the cost. At this point, it is in legal's hands. So, I cannot offer any information other than what is shared with me with our legal. That's also hopefully going to be discussed with Ms. Krebs here shortly. We would like for you guys to approach this very slowly if you have some time before you consider any resolutions on anything to allow the legal aspect of this to play out. Because there have, has been some cases quoted and our legal has taken a look at that and we're also taking a look at some other things. So, before you pass a resolution, if you can, if you can table it, at least while it's until there's some more discussions, maybe Ms. Krebs can give you some further direction and our legal will give us a little bit further direction. But overall, this is a project that we've looked at for at least two years now. And I think it goes back to Mike Kirley, which would be in excess of two years. So, this is not like the cost just popped up here. This is something that's been going on. This is something that we've been discussing with the city. The mayor and I have been discussing this the last couple of months. And we just want you to know that we want to try to work with you, but we've got to also follow Public Service Commission guidelines that our legal has got to give us some more clarification on as well as discuss with the city of Mammell, okay? Do you have any questions on the details that I may be able to answer? If I can't answer them, I'll let you know I can't. But I'm here to answer any questions on the specifics of it. But our position right now is still very fluid, as Ms. Krebs explained it, as well as the mayor. Okay?
Outstanding. I do have a madam city attorney?
And I'm not trying to be negative.
And I'm not trying to be negative, but I have waited weeks at a time for responses from your legal department. And I, we did wait on this, I believe, third response. So this was not a step taken hastily or without every attempt at communication. Unfortunately, responses have not been rapidly forthcoming, and there has not been a great deal of detail regarding Entergy's position.
You're in discussion directly with Mr. Darling, correct?
I spoke to him on the phone for about five minutes today, and I did get the last email from him after having at least two with Matt Sufferin, I believe.
Okay, Matt's the other legal representative, and you discussed this with Matt prior to discussing it with Mr. Darling, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. All I can tell you, ma'am, is at this point, I've got to wait for direction from our legal group. I'm glad that you're talking. I keep plugging Webb, you know, just to kind of make sure, you know, he's got it on his agenda to kind of get us an answer. We're still taking a look and seeing exactly, you know, what our position will be on this because it's not only going to affect the city of Maumell. If there's any changes to franchise agreements, we're sure that the other cities are going to try to take a look at this, and we want to try to stay uniform in how we approach franchise agreements, relocation, right-of-way issues with all cities. We want them all to be the same, but let me make it clear, 26 poles. You're talking 300 feet span per pole. You're talking wires, attachments, everything that has to be paid for out of Energy's pocket on this. And it's not, it's an issue now, do we set precedent or does this violate, you know, any possible statutes? Not statutes, I'm sorry, but any other guidelines that are out there with regard to following relocation cost and who is appropriately charged for it? So we're just waiting for some clarification. I can't explain Mr. Darling's agenda, Ms. Krebs, but I will make sure that I stay on top of it.
Thank you, sir. Was there any additional questions, comments, discussion? Councilmember Mazzoni?
Is there any, if we do table, is there any timeline or added costs we would incur for another? Or if we table it, will there be any, do you see any benefit that will come our way that will open up discussions better?
Well, just to make clear, I mean, our project is just on hold right now because I guess my opinion is that Entergy has refused to remove their equipment. And I understand if they want to move their equipment and then take action to try to recoup their expenses, but I really am struggling with the fact that they've been asked to move their equipment and have just said, no, we're not going to do it. So, you know, if they're in agreement to go ahead and start movement on getting these poles out of the way, I'm happy to talk about that and, you know, negotiate or go to a mediator or Public Service Commission or whomever we need to go to. But we need the poles moved so that we can go on with the project. I mean, you know, we're getting put farther back in the line of their projects because we can't, they can't make progress because Entergy has just said blanketly, we will not move our equipment unless you pay this large sum of money. And, you know, we're just not fully convinced that that's the city's role and responsibility. They use our city rights of way every single day to, it's a very profitable organization with a lot of very highly compensated people. They use that city property every single day to provide that service. And it, so it's not, you know, when he says, yeah, it's 26 poles, and yet, but that's a cost of doing business. That's a cost of doing business in the city of Maumell, and that's how you provide that service and make that money. So I'm just not convinced that it's okay for them to say, no, we're just not going to move our poles, and we're going to hold up your project until you pay what we say you owe.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Mazzoni?
I think so.
If-
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I comment on that, please?
Yes, you may have comments, and then if there's any questions for Mr. Johnson, please let me know.
Your attorney has her view. Our attorney has our view. I say you give them both time to get to a conclusion on this. You can go ahead and do your resolution if you want to. I'm not here trying to prevent that. I'm just here trying to explain our position, which is it's now in legal's hand. Let's give them an opportunity to work this out before you go ahead and move and find out, maybe through a Public Service Commission ruling, that, yes, a customer requesting a utility that is operating within an existing right-of-way has to remove those facilities and relocate them at their cost. Because if it were a residential customer down a country road and they decided they wanted to remove the poles off of their property because they wanted to expand it, somebody's got to pay for that. And we're just trying to figure out, does that apply to cities with franchise agreements, all of that? And all we're asking is just a little bit more time. That's all I have to comment, mayor.
Thank you. Were there any additional questions for Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Osborne, go for it.
Can we not move forward with this? If there's going to be a lawsuit, then let the attorneys handle that at a later date. The situation we have down there is dangerous, and you're not helping at all. That cannot be finished by the time school starts. There's school buses going down that road, and one side of the road is at least two feet deeper than the other side of the road. And there is only, on Crystal Hill Road, you got a major difference in the number of poles. I don't know exactly, but it'll be between six and 10. So could we get Crystal Hill Road done and then argue over this and let the attorneys fight down the road? I mean, time is the essence, and you're asking for a delay to let legal work it out. I've never known legal to get in a hurry for anything.
We understand. We understand the frustration. If you can, find a little time. Let Ms. Krebs and Mr. Darling have a chance to try to work things out, maybe by the next meeting. If not, then you can go ahead with it. I mean, you can go ahead with it today. It's already in legal's hands, as Mr. Osborne is clearly aware, too. There's got to be some issues worked out from a legal perspective. And even if you do go ahead and do it, and a determination is not in your favor, you're still going to hold the money. You're still going to hold the money if that's the case. It may be a situation where you may not be. I don't know. All I'm saying is it's too fluid right now, and that's our company's position if you're trying to make some decisions and move ahead tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. If I may, one of the difficulties is not that it feels as though there's anything pending with Entergy. The, our position is that we have to do something to get the ball rolling. And as it's currently working, as we've gone back and forth with you, and then once it got into legal's hand, it's a very, it's like pulling nails to get feedback on something. The city attorney eventually had to bypass one person, find their supervisor, send emails with follow-up emails in order to finally get an email that doesn't provide any legal analysis. It doesn't feel as though anything is happening. If you're saying, are you saying that something is happening and you guys are in the process of doing something? It was my understanding that you guys were, that it's finalized until something else happens.
If I were to address the timeline, mayor, you know how long I've been in this position.
Long enough for me to call you a few times.
Okay. With regard to this issue, I can't give you the exact dates. I've talked, I believe, to you guys on the phone, you and Ms. Krebs, at least one time. And at that point, we kind of sensed this is going to be a legal issue, and we referred it over to legal. So I'm going to say probably in the last two and a half, maybe three months, I've actually been pulled into this and discussing it with the engineer. I've sat down with engineering and asked them to reevaluate their cost figures to see what else could be done. So we've looked at this at least two or three times from a financial perspective. We understand that, yes, you got to do some things because some things have already been done. But with regard to this particular issue, because it's now illegal, it's got to run its course now. So I can't give you any heads up. They can do whatever they want to do. What we're trying to say is that we want to try to get it legally straightened out first, and she is in touch. I'm sorry, the, Maumell's legal counsel is in touch with our legal counsel. And I know they have been discussing things over the last, I'm going to say, two or three weeks for sure. I know a conference call was held today. I don't know anything about the specifics of it, you know, but I'll follow up with Webb Darling to find out what the next steps are. But that's all I can answer right now, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
All right, thank you.
Madam city attorney?
I just want to say it has been substantially longer than two or three weeks. I've waited three weeks just for a response to some of my initial emails before I've, you know, pushed forward and sent more emails and made phone calls.
How many weeks?
It's been months.
I thought you just said it's been about three weeks.
Since, in between two emails, maybe, but I mean, this has been going on.
It's been going on for years. I stated that when I initially introduced myself. It's been going on for years.
Just these latest, these latest discussions and over this particular location and this particular issue. This is not a step that we took lightly. It's not that we want to, you know, have an adversarial relationship with Energy. We don't want that at all, but, you know, when you finally receive a response, it's just, no, I don't think that we, I think you should have to pay for it, and that's it, you know, that without a lot of rationale behind that, you have to take some kind of action. We have, we have to get the project moving. One of the things that you mentioned is, you know, Public Service Commission regulations on residents that want equipment moved. This is not, this is not a residential situation. There's a franchise agreement with the city of Maumell. We're a political subdivision of the state. It's not an equivalent situation. You use our rights of way every single day. The city owned rights of way for utility service. It's not the same as a resident that you just run service to their house. We really have, you know, tried to be patient and not, you know, brush this unnecessarily, but we've reached a point where we just weren't really getting anywhere. So it's time to do something to get the project moving.
Okay. I did state initially that a resident versus a city with a franchise agreement, it has to be looked at differently, and that's where we are. So I do agree with your statement on that part. I cannot explain the time, Ms. Krebs, on that. Legal has their timeframe. All I can do is just, you know, make them aware that we're awaiting some type of discussion or decision. But that's all I have to share.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tierney?
I'd like to ask more questions of Mr. Osborne about the public safety concerns that he expressed, if he has a moment.
If you drive down there, you'll see the safety issue. The street, half of it is two feet deeper than the other half. It's a safety issue, and nothing is going on. School buses go down that road to a special school just down the road. Then there are other buses, when school starts, going to be going down that road. It is an accident waiting for something to happen. If you go down and look at it, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about, and I don't understand why we can't move forward with this. And if it's going to be a legal issue, fight it out. At some point, someone is going to make a decision, whatever that is. We have to live with it. But we don't have to live with the danger of a road torn all to pieces and half of it at least two feet lower than the other half. There's still cars going down that half a road at high rates of speed.
Thank you. Did you have any questions, Mr. Tierney?
No, that was what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, I actually drove down that, that area just two or three days ago or four or five days ago, and I was in my Jeep. I was glad I was in my Jeep because it really isn't a road anymore. It's, it's just, it's really all-terrain vehicle, one lane pathway that goes down there. So it's not even a road at this point. It's, I had it on my list to ask the mayor what the status was because it seemed like it wasn't moving along, but I think, I think we now know. So, yeah, we need to, we need to proceed on that. Thank you.
Thank you. If there is no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-15. I've got a motion second. Councilmember Mosley?
I was going to make the motion or second, so it's done. Thanks.
All right. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt Resolution 2021-15? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Very quickly, I just want to say thank you to the city attorney for, for working so diligently on this of late. And also thank you to you, Mr. Johnson, for coming out and explaining y'all's position. I appreciate it. With that, that concludes new business. We will move on to mayor's comments. Really quickly, I wanted to point out, please take a look at the Juneteenth proclamation that I included in the council packet. That was basically a duplication of the one that Governor Hutchinson posted and put, a proclamation that he signed. I wanted to read just a real quick, a couple sentences that we posted on Facebook, not the entire thing, but it said that "Juneteenth, now a federal holiday commemorates the end of slavery in the United States." "I think this holiday should be celebrated by all Americans that value freedom and liberty and that believe that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their creator with certain unalienable rights, and that among these rights are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." So I just wanted to point that out. Juneteenth was on Saturday. And I also wanted to take a minute to introduce our new communications coordinator, Sidney Thompson, who you may have seen taking pictures there, so hopefully y'all get a chance to see her in the coming weeks. And she's probably on the edge of her seat wondering if I'm going to call her up because I told her I might, I might not, but I think I'll spare her for the time being. So please, if you see Sidney, please welcome her to the team. We're happy to have her. With that, we will move on to council member comments. Councilmember Mosley?
I'm just going to make kind of a preliminary planning commission report. They've had the subcommittee meeting, and there were two items on the agenda. We may have one of those items coming at the next meeting, so I wanted to go ahead and give you a heads up. One item is the Pfeiffer property that's on the other side of the boulevard from City Hall there. It's the outlying area. We've already approved the kind of inner area of land use and zoning change, I believe. And this one here is, it was sent back to planning because we forgot to mail out some letters and some things in the process, so we kind of, we're doing a redo on this. One thing that was talked about in the meeting was, there was at least one planning commission member who didn't realize that, that there were probably going to be apartments and multi-housing, you know, very dense multi-housing going in on that area. And so that's what we're going to be saying, is that they want to rezone it from C3 to C2, I believe, which would allow, would allow high-density housing. And I don't see Mr. Grummer shaking his head, so I guess I've got it right. But the other item is there's going to be fellows wanting to put in a miniature golf course over there on the, I don't know, I'm drawing a blank on the road, but it's the industrial road, Murphy, Murphy Drive, that just before you go around the curve to head to the police station, it's going to be, it would be there on the east side. And it's a little thin lot, and so they're going to try to put in enough parking and the miniature golf. So anyway, that's coming through the process, but that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional council member comments? Seeing none, we will move on to city attorney comments.
No additional comments.
Madam city clerk?
No comments.
And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I've got a motion. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. We adjourn. Thank you.
Let's take it away for somebody. Let's keep it rolling.